Good evening. Thank you all for coming. Obviously, tonight's July 11th. We're here for the Village Board meeting. I want to welcome the trustees and thank them for attending tonight, as well as our department heads and everybody who is in the audience. The video of the meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube and will be available on Facebook and posted to the Village website. So at this time, I would ask that Clerk Saladino call the meeting to order and call the roll.
Trustee Augustine.
Here.
Trustee Gale.
Here.
Trustee Koteenick.
Here.
Trustee McGee.
Here.
Trustee O'Brien.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Here.
President Kukler.
Here, thank you. At this time, it's the time for the Pledge Allegiance, and I think we're going to be led by a great resident, Ms. West. If you could come to the microphone and lead us, that would be fantastic. And you can introduce yourself. There, you just talk and you'll be fine. Milo's going to help you.
Hello. Hi, I'm Bridget West, and I'm here to do the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Bridget. And what grade are you in?
I'm in fourth grade.
Terrific. And your teachers are doing a great job at St. Francis, so thank you for leading us.
You're welcome.
Next up, it's my pleasure to request that Officer Jacob Morrison and his family, whoever wants to, come forward, please. And before we, as he's walking up, on March 3rd, 2022, the LaGrange Board of Fire and Police Commissioners appointed Jacob Morrison to the position of probationary police officer. Jacob obtained his Bachelor's of Science degree in law enforcement and justice administration from Western Illinois in 2018, and he was most recently employed as a clerk for Jewel Osco. Jacob recently graduated from the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy at the College of DuPage on July 1st. College of DuPage on July 1st of 2022, so just recently. And the academy training is 14 weeks in duration. Jacob is starting the first phase of the additional 14 weeks of field training with a specially trained police officer within the LaGrange Police Department. And we are pleased to present Jacob to the Village Board, and we are happy that his father, Mark, his mother, Laura, are there for this occasion, as well as his sister, Jessica, and brother-in-law, Tyler. So thank you very much for the family for coming. We do appreciate it. And if Clerk Saladino can do the honors.
So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jacob Morrison.
I, Jacob Morrison.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of police officer.
To the office of police officer.
In the Village of LaGrange.
In the Village of LaGrange.
In the County of Cook.
In the County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Mr. and Mrs. Morrison, congratulations on raising such a great son. And we are lucky to have him. We appreciate him coming to LaGrange. We appreciate all the officers that are here tonight to welcome him, and thank you very much. Moving on to trustee assignments. I'm pleased to make the following trustee assignments for the coming year. Economic Development, trustee Augustine. Finance, trustee Gale. Intergovernmental Relations, I'll handle. Planning and zoning, trustee McGee and trustee Koteenick. Public Safety, trustee Peterson. And Public Works, trustee O'Brien. As far as liaison assignments, Community Economic Development Commission will be assigned to trustee Augustine. Design and Review Commission to trustee Peterson. Environmental Quality Commission to trustee Gale. Plan Commission to trustee O'Brien. And Zoning Board of Appeals to trustee McGee and trustee Koteenick. And these will become effective tonight. Moving on. In accordance with the sections in municipal code, it's necessary to appoint individuals for the position of village attorney, village prosecutor, village treasurer, and village collector. These are appointed positions for a fixed term of one year, with such terms to be filled after May 1 of each calendar year. The appointments recommended below, and I'll read them, are for May 1, 2022, to April 30, 2023. Village Attorney, Elrad Friedman. Ben Schuster's usually up here. Village Prosecutors, John Kinney. Village Treasurer and Collector is our Finance Director, Lou Siparoni. So at this time, I would move for a voice vote, but I think trustee Augustine may want to recuse apart.
Yes, thank you, President Kukler. I would just like to recuse myself from voting in regards to the village prosecutor.
And do we need a second on my motion or just a voice vote?
A second.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Koteenick. Clerk Saladino, I guess we can do this by voice vote, but if you would call that, I'd appreciate it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you, and we appreciate their service. Obviously, it was nice to appoint Officer Morrison, and again, for his family to come out, because our first responders, both police and firemen, on a daily basis, put their lives in danger. And this was shown again on July 4th during the Highland Park shooting and murdering that occurred. The Village Board offers their condolences to the Highland Park community for the lives lost and all of those that are affected by the mass shooting. Again, we want to recognize the first responders that were at the scene, that went to the scene, again, to putting their lives in danger, to do their best to protect the spectators that were at the parade, and then the communities that worked to apprehend the individual. So we do appreciate you in LaGrange. We appreciate the first responders in our neighboring communities and really throughout the state. For those at home that would like to help the city of Highland Park, you can go to their website, cityhpil.com, and they have a link for donations that they're organizing for, again, the victims. We in LaGrange have strategic priorities to enhance our emergency preparedness. And I'd like to ask Police Chief Warloff to talk a little bit about that. And then I'm going to ask Ben Schuster to speak a little bit about the Red Flag Law. I'm sure a lot of people like me have heard, you know, what can we do? And I think citizens can, you know, keep their eyes open. If they see something unusual, call the police department. If there's a family member or friend or neighbor, someone that you notice that's suffering from mental illness, report, so that their ability to obtain a firearm is limited or restricted is probably the best thing. But Chief Warloff, I pass it on to you.
Thank you very much, President Kukler. I appreciate this opportunity to touch on community, public safety, and planning for events. The Village of LaGrange staff from Administration, Community Development, Public Works, the Fire Department, as well as the Police Department, work collectively with the community stakeholders, such as the LaGrange Business Association, the LaGrange Pet Parade Committee, and the Park District of LaGrange in preparation for all major events occurring in LaGrange. Multiple pre-planning meetings are typically held prior to each meeting or event. Matters discussed include, but are not limited to, resource allocation, geographic layout, capacity needs, attendant numbers, length of the event, public utilities, safety concerns, traffic, parking, weather, and evacuation plans. Additionally, information learned from prior events in LaGrange, as well as from other municipalities, are factored in when solidifying operations for such events. Incident action plans are developed from all information learned and disseminated to all involved parties. These incident action plans are guidelines to be used if an incident does occur. All efforts are made to ensure each event receives the appropriate resources, event workup, and staffing to ensure the welfare of all that will be in attendance. The Police Department and the Fire Department typically use resources to include the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System, referred to as NIPIS, the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System, ILEUS, the Cook County Department of Emergency Management and Regional Security, the Cook County Sheriff's Police, the Chicago Police Department, Illinois State Police Intelligence Command, referred to as STIC, Major Case Assistance Team, the South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force. We also use the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, referred to as MABUS, and additionally, such assets as command posts. As always, the LaGrange Police Department advocates for citizens to provide information on safety matters. Citizens can contact the Police Department non-emergency number of 708-579-2333 and request to speak to an officer, or they may leave a message on the Police Department tip line, 708-579-0688. The LaGrange Police Department and the Village of LaGrange are committed to the welfare and safety of all at these events. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. We appreciate it. And Attorney Schuster.
Yeah, so thank you very much. And I was just going to kind of give you a quick summary of the Red Flag laws in Illinois. You know, and one of the themes I think you're going to hear me talk about is the police depends so much on what the public tells them. It depends on the family members. It depends on the friends. So if anybody has any concerns, passing that information along. Otherwise, it makes it much more difficult for the police to be able to act and use the Red Flag laws. So in Illinois, the Red Flag laws are governed really by two different statutes and their analog regulations in the Illinois Administrative Code. There's the Firearms Owners Identification Card Act, or often referred to as the Foid Act. And then there's the Firearms Restraining Order Act in place. So there's been a lot of discussion with Highland Park and people have heard the term "the clear and present danger reporting." And that's one form of it, which I will talk about. And then the other form is, under the Firearms Restraining Order Act, is a court-ordered restraining order preventing somebody from being able to possess and purchase firearms. So let's start with the clear and present danger reporting. When the police learn information about somebody being a clear and present danger or a serious, somebody who's a serious threat of physical violence against a reasonably identifiable victim, or somebody who poses a clear and imminent risk of serious physical injury to himself, herself, or another person, the police, as well as other mental health professionals, can submit a clear and present danger form that goes to the Illinois State Police. It is then the responsibility of the Illinois State Police to conduct an analysis to determine if a person poses an actual clear and present danger. And what they look at is whether somebody is an actual, there's an actual impending or imminent threat of substantial bodily harm to themselves or another person. But it has to be articulable and significant, and that somebody will be likely to act in a manner that's dangerous. I know that's a mouthful. But what that really means is it's not just, you know, this person is acting strange, I have concerns. Rather, in order for the Illinois State Police to say that somebody's barred, or to suspend a Foid card, or to say that we are not going to issue a Foid card, they need to have evidence that somebody has a specific threat, that they're going, that there's an imminent danger, and that's what they look to. Now, the State Police receive a lot of these forms and a lot of claims that somebody may be dangerous and suspicious, but for them to actually take action, they need that specific information. And that's really where it's incumbent upon the public to share with the police as much as they know, so that way, when our police department submits a form, they can include as much information as possible. Unfortunately, in the past, one of the difficult parts with this act is that, once the State Police make a determination, and if they determine that somebody has not met the standard, they do not necessarily tell the local police department who submitted the form. We may submit it, but may not find out whether or not the State Police have acted. Further, the State Police, under the regulations in the past, if somebody does not meet their standards, destroys the forms in so that there's not a record that one may have been submitted. The other act, the Firearms Restraining Order Act, allows law enforcement, as well as family members and others who know about a serious situation, to go to court and file for a restraining order, to get a court order preventing a person from purchasing, possessing, or receiving a firearm or ammunition or firearm parts. But again, the struggle there is that you have to show an immediate and present danger. Importantly, and one of the most difficult parts about this act is that in order to bring such a complaint, somebody has to be willing either to sign an affidavit with their personal knowledge, or we need, as a village, to be able to bring a verified pleading, meaning we have to have firsthand knowledge that somebody is an imminent danger. It cannot be, well, somebody told us. The person who told us would need to sign that affidavit. And that's what makes it so difficult, is that so much of what we learn can be secondhand. So that's where cooperation is really important for people who are willing to sign the forms and come forward. If we file a petition, the next step is there is a court hearing. And at that court hearing, we have to show by clear and convincing evidence that there is this significant danger, which is a hard bar to hit. Not just more likely than not, but rather, we have to show the evidence is clear and convincing. At which point, a court can issue two types of restraining orders, one for up to 14 days and one for up to six months. If either of them expire, and when they do, in order for that to continue, we would need to go back to court and once again prove that the situation is not better, that there's still, as of the new filing, a clear and present, you know, this clear and present danger that would necessitate extending the order. But that's how our Red Flags laws work. And again, it's the cooperation with everybody in the community that is so important.
Thank you very much. Very informative. And I appreciate both the reporting from Chief Warloff and Attorney Schuster. LaGrange is known for their events and festivities, and that's why I thought it was, or the board thought it was important to hear a report. If any of the board members have any questions or comments, happy to have them. Otherwise, I would move on to say that our next event is the Craft Fair. And that's next weekend, from July 15th through the 17th in downtown LaGrange. It's one of our most popular summer events in the area, and it will feature nearly 200 artisans offering a broad range of one-of-a-kind items. We want to encourage everyone to come out and attend. It really is a wonderful event. We have Nancy Cummings from the LGBA. Nancy, did I leave out anything, or do you want to add anything? Thanks for coming up.
The only other thing I'll add is that we are having a special Craft Fair VIP customer card. People can pick it up at the information booth, and it entitles them to fun offers and discounts at some of our neighborhood shops.
So will that be available at the farmer's market or starting on Friday?
It'll be available at the Craft Fair.
Okay, terrific.
At the information booth and at every craft vendor booth as well.
All right. Terrific. Thank you. So again, we're hoping everybody will come out. We're hoping everybody will be safe. It's a board meeting, so it's time to report on flood mitigation. It's been a busy couple of weeks. The litigation is continuing to proceed. Our village manager, Andre Peterson, was deposed. The attorney said that she did a fine job representing the village's interests, and we appreciate her efforts in that regard. I've also had the opportunity to speak with Congresswoman Newman, and she's continuing to work to get funding through. The bill where she believes funding will be secured is past one hurdle since the last meeting and will, in the next eight weeks or so, be voted on by both the House and the Senate. And she, again, remains confident that there will be funding for some project or projects in LaGrange. So we appreciate her efforts in that regard. Lastly, I want to bring up that it is normal for the summer. We're going to cancel our next two Village Board meetings, so the last meeting in July and the first meeting in August. Although we will not be meeting both the board, but much more, not nearly as much as our staff, we'll be continuing to work on all items. And obviously, the Village Hall will remain completely open. We will be available if anything arises to meet, and we'll continue to communicate with each other. The next regularly scheduled Village Board meeting will be Monday, August 22nd, and it'll be here at 7:30. Normally, I would have the manager's report next. However, during the manager's report, we're going to be talking about lead service lines, which is a hot item in municipal government and lengthy. But we want to move that towards the end, because it is a lengthy matter. So at this time, I would ask Clerk Saladino to read the items under both the Consent and Business section of the agenda.
Consent, agenda, and vote. Matters on the consent agenda will be considered by a single motion and vote, because they've already been considered fully by the board at a previous meeting or have been determined to be of a routine nature. Any member of the Board of Trustees may request that an item be moved from the consent agenda to current business for separate consideration. Item A, ordinance. Amending Chapter 111 of the LaGrange Code of Ordinances Regarding Alcoholic Liquor. Item B, ordinance. Creating a Class C4 liquor license, Tivoli Enterprises, Inc., doing business as LaGrange Theater. Item C, ordinance. Creating a Class C1 liquor license, Balkan Bakery LaGrange LLC, doing business as Balkan Bakery. Item D, resolution. Ratification of collective bargaining agreement between the Village of LaGrange and IAFF Local Number 2338, Firefighters and Fire Lieutenants. Item E, award of contract. Construction of fiscal year 2022-23 Street Patching Program and Agreement, Construction Engineering Services Street Patching Program. Item F, Intergovernmental Agreement. LaGrange Road Train Station Rehabilitation Project, Metra. Item G, Award of Contract. Demolition Services. Item H, Agreement. Side letter of agreement with IUOE Local 150. Item I, ordinance. Disposal of Property, Police Department. Item J, Minutes of the Village Board of Trustees' Regular Meeting, Monday, June 27, 2022. Item K, Consolidated Voucher 220711. And current business. This agenda item includes considerations of matters being presented to the Board of Trustees for action. Item A, Special Event. 2022 Endless Summer Fest. Request for approval.
Thank you, Clerk Saladino. I would now ask if there's anybody... I would now ask if there's anybody in the audience that has any comments regarding matters on tonight's agenda. And I will recognize that we have Chris Johnson from Classic Cinemas Theater LaGrange, who may come up and tell us a little bit about that. We also have Maria Pekovic from Balkan Bakery, that hopefully will come and tell us a little bit about her bakery. And then we have some firefighters that are here to make sure that the contract gets signed by our board, and I'm sure it will, but if anybody wants to come up, please feel welcome to do so.
Hi, my name's Maria Pekovic. I'm from Balkan Bakery in the south end of LaGrange. We are a family-owned bakery, made from scratch, and specialty store. We specialize in sweet and savory items at our bakery, from hand-stretched filo dough, filled with various savory fillings, to small cookies, cakes, baklava, strudels, and croissants. We do have a large following in the area, and a lot of clients and customers that do travel from all over the various states that we do border, and we're happy to be in LaGrange. We love it, and we thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Maria. And before you go, I know that you took over the business from your mother-in-law. How long have you, the family, been in business, and what are your hours?
So, we've been in business for 15 years. I have been in charge for the last two years, and we're open Monday through Friday, 8 to 4, 8 to 3 on Saturdays, and 8 to 2 on Sundays, seven days a week.
Thank you, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Johnson from Classic Cinemas LaGrange Theater, and I want to thank you for considering the liquor license, but I also wanted to give you an update on what we've been doing. And the week prior to the Fourth of July, I think at our most attended week was 3,900 people, and the Fourth of July week, we did over 6,000 people for the week, which, considering we only have 236 seats at the moment, that's a lot of people, and a lot of sellouts. So, we appreciate everybody that's come out, and we apologize to those that couldn't make it in. But we will open the remaining two auditoriums, obviously after inspection, on the 22nd of this month, so a week from Friday, thereabouts, you know, who knows, it might be a day early, I don't know. But during this time, we've also had, we have our Wednesday morning movie series, which is a $2 movie, and of, again, those 236 seats, we sold 222, leaving, you know, just a few seats here and there. But we've hosted many day camps, church groups, and it was kind of, I go to the theater a lot and kind of talk to people and see what they're doing, and we had, we have accessibility equipment that wasn't there before, captioning equipment, and I saw people utilizing that that were deaf, and they enjoyed it, you know, they gave the thumbs up, and were very happy with it, people in wheelchairs. And the other, you know, excitement is, we actually, Top Gun was the highest-crossing film at the theater since they started keeping records back in 2000, so it has done well. So we appreciate all the support, and both from staff, the community, and, you know, just, yeah, we're happy to be there, and if, you know, this goes through, then we'll, we have to get coolers and do some implementation, but things are going well, and we appreciate the support.
Thank you for coming out, Chris. We appreciate your investment in LaGrange, your efforts. It's a wonderful building. The movies this summer have been great, and it sounds like continue to have a lot of blockbusters coming out, so we know that you'll continue to be successful. So thank you very much. And again, they're both asking for the board to allow the limited sale of liquor in their premises. And seeing nobody else with anything comment, I would, at this time, entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
Thank you, trustees, and I would allow trustee Augustine.
Yes, also here, I recuse myself from voting on any agenda, on agenda items related to the village prosecutor. And I also did have one comment.
Okay, please start.
Yeah, thank you. On the consent agenda, Letter E, the award of contract for construction and construction engineering, Rick, I'm gonna probably be asking you these questions, if you don't mind. So we're looking at doing the pothole repairs beyond what we would normally do. So you described in here that it's kind of a new thing, and I was hoping you could elaborate a little bit more, paying a little attention beyond what was listed here, as to what the contractor we're hiring will be doing that differs and is vastly improved from what we can do in-house. And also, is this addressing pretty much all the known potholes now, since we're pulling two fiscal year budgets together?
Yeah, thank you, and absolutely, we're really excited about this program, so thanks for the opportunity to speak to it. This fills in a kind of a piece of our maintenance, maintenance strategy that we didn't have previously. So, in-house, we do a lot of potholing, we do some patching, we're limited in capacity, we don't have some of the larger equipment that we would have with a firm like this. And then every few years, we do larger-scale reconstruction, like we're doing on Brainerd next year, and some of these other projects that occur. We're not able to do those every year from a budgetary perspective, so we felt like there was a need and an opportunity for patching, basically, so it's localized, it's in our worst areas, it's approximately 7,700 square yards of patching, it's occurring on over 20 blocks throughout the village. It's not a full-scale street replacement at this juncture, because our budget can't support that, but it is addressing some of our worst potholes and issues that we have. And again, it fills a gap between where our capacity is limited, and helps us get some improvement, and extends the service life until our next kind of recapitalization of the street. So, we're really excited about the program. It is a newer program for the village, so we estimate it in this, going into this upcoming fiscal year, for a budgetary amount of around $100,000. Ideally, potholes form over the winter, with your freeze-thaw cycle, so we are looking at combining the possible spring budget with this budget into one larger project, around $250,000 in construction expense. We don't feel like things are getting cheaper in that realm, even with labor shortages and things of that nature. We had five competitive bidders, which is good, it kind of indicates, again, they were bidding competitively against one another. And then, I do feel like, we, again, we were looking at evaluating this, we looked at the scope of, I can't ever say this is everything, but it's a good, good, good chunk of some of our worst needed areas, and we felt like moving it up now to get that done would have the biggest benefit. So, from a timing perspective, we'd be doing a little bit more early. I can't say it's going to be everything, everything, but I do think it's going to be some of our worst areas that we have on the radar that otherwise wouldn't have been addressed until the '26, '27 fiscal year timeframe. But we should be able to get some of that benefit now, and then look into next year and the following year at smaller programs, that'll pick up whatever's left and whatever continues to fail as we kind of evaluate recondition.
Okay, thank you. And then, one final question. I know you keep good data, and you've put a map together for us in this agenda, which is available publicly with the, you know, a line down the streets that are most affected. If someone's looking at this, and they don't see their street, but they feel like they've got some significant ones, is there still room for them to reach out?
Yeah, so, yeah, we would ask that anyone who has potholing or concerns on your street to please, we have a pothole request form on the village website, so there is still a lot that we can do in-house to kind of extend that. This is where we started to kind of have that sub-base failure, and we're working kind of in a larger patch area, but anyone who sees or has an issue, please don't hesitate to reach out to Public Works, Works, call us, or again, we have a pothole request form on that. The scope of this one is largely limited, based on budget and kind of where we think our cost is going to be. I don't know if we would be adding a lot of new blocks or streets that we haven't currently considered. We'd really be looking at those for a future upcoming program, and evaluating the need against kind of the available budget.
Well, thanks for finding this middle ground, I think this will be really helpful. Appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee Augustine. So you know the questions, I would ask clerk Saladino to lead us in a roll call vote.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee Kateneck?
Aye.
Trustee Gale?
Aye.
Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Moving on to current business, I will move it to trustee Augustine for the 2022 Endless Summer Fest.
Okay, thank you again, President Kukler. And we've heard a little bit about this already tonight. We have many events here in LaGrange, and of the many events that take place here, there are three big ones. Summer Carnival, which happens at the beginning, end of spring, beginning of summer, and that's put on by the, hosted by the LGBA. The Pet Parade, which is put on by Pet Parade Charities, same weekend, huge events. And then there's the Endless Summer, which is really not an endless summer, it's at the end of summer. It's, and that's a great event. That's a big one, and that's hosted and put on by the Park District with a real strong assist by the LGBA, once again. And the Summer, unlike the other titles, doesn't have what it is in the name, but I think most of us who've been here for a few years know that it's a four-in-one, it's a carnival, a concert experience, it's a food event, and it's a really great fireworks show. If you haven't seen them there, fantastic. And that culminates in the final evening. And like many other events, I think it's important just to say that these things would not be possible without the army of volunteers from business owners and residents, and thanks to everyone who helps in that regard. So tonight, in this agenda, we have a letter from the Park District of LaGrange stating their intent to hold the 2022 Endless Summer Fest together with the LaGrange Business Association from August 5th to August 7th. The event will include carnival rides, foods, drinks, food, drinks, live entertainment, and fireworks. The event hours will be Friday, 4 to 11, Saturday, 12 to 11, and Sunday, 12 to 10:30 p.m. The event will once again be located in Gordon Park, and the park and the LGBA is seeking village approval to use the Locust Avenue right-of-way and Municipal Lot 14 for event operations. Street and parking lot closure will begin at 12:01 a.m. on August 3rd. Event parking will principally be provided within the event site and additional overflow parking located in the Shawmet Industrial Park. As in the past, this event is proposed to include fireworks, the fireworks display on Sunday, and in Section 94.25 of Village Code, it grants the president and the Board of Trustees the authority to waive local prohibition on fireworks for the public display of fireworks by properly qualified people under the direct supervision of experts in the handling of fireworks. Accordingly, staff has reviewed the request, recommending approval of the fireworks display with the following conditions, step through these, the highlights being, of course, they'll be keeping an eye on wind direction and speed, that'll be monitored by the Park District, Mad Bomber Fireworks Productions, and Illinois State Licensed Firework Display Vendor. Prior to commencing with the fireworks display, the fireworks display vendor must consult with the fire department. Fireworks display vendor shall comply with all local, state, and federal requirements regarding fireworks displays, and the maximum size of fireworks mortar shell shall be three inches. Designated discharge and display area must be secured from the spectator viewing area with adequate barrier fencing, and the fireworks fallout area must be secured with adequate barrier fencing. With respect to alcohol, the Park District is requesting village authorization to sell beer and wine during event hours. If we here concur with this request, the village will need to formally approve the closure of Locust Avenue right-of-way and Parking Lot 14, will need to waive restrictions for the outdoor display, sale of goods, approved carnival rides as temporary use, and grant permission for fire, display of fireworks separately. Liquor Commission will need to grant permission to the Park District and the LGBA to sell alcohol during this event. Our staff is recommending that we approve the above listed with the following conditions, that the park, the LGBA, and the fireworks production company will work cooperatively with our village staff to provide adequate site security measures, pedestrian access, and vehicular circulation to and from the event. Police officers and event will have hired staff, and they will assist in controlling vehicles and pedestrians arriving and leaving the event. All overtime costs incurred will, by the Village of LaGrange, will be reimbursed to us by the Park District and/or the LaGrange Business Association. Park District of LaGrange and the LaGrange Business Association and Mad Bomber Fireworks Productions are to provide proof of appropriate liability insurance and name the Village of LaGrange as additional insured for this event. To Hold Harmless is to be signed, and adjacent property owners will be notified of the event in writing at least two weeks prior to the event. Endless Summer Fest committee reps are here tonight, and will be available to answer any further questions we may have. I move to support this request for approval as listed.
Thank you, trustee Augustine, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Gale. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'd ask clerk Saladino for a roll call vote.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee Kateneck?
Aye.
Trustee Gale?
Aye.
Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. We do thank all the volunteers. Nancy, we appreciate all your efforts. Jenny, I think she's here, we appreciate the efforts from the Park District, and again, our public works department works very hard during the event, our police department works very hard making sure that it's an orderly event, and our fire department does a great job making sure that the rides are safe, and if anyone needs emergency paramedic service, they're also available. So, it's a real great village-wide effort, and we appreciate it all. Moving on, we will have a village manager's report shortly, but I do want to open it up to if anyone has any comments that aren't on tonight's agenda. Seeing one.
Hi, I'm Laura West. I live at 140 Sunset. I think I could take some public speaking tips from my daughter Bridget here.
She did a great job.
Thank you for having both of us. I'm here, probably no surprise, to express my frustration with the flooding north of 47th, specifically Sunset and Elm, but throughout a lot of parts of the village. What I hear often is how much the village cares, how much everybody's working on it. What we don't hear are answers to our questions, ideas of concrete things that can be done, as well as plans for the future. It's been pretty much stated that Mars is the solution, and until 2029, that will not happen for various reasons. I would like to push back a little on that suggestion, and things take a long time to happen. If we start planning for Mars today, we will be lucky if it's finished by 2029. If we start breaking ground today, we will be lucky if it's finished by 2029. If the capacity restriction isn't until 2029 for 100% capacity, I would also argue that having some capacity is better than no capacity at all, and if it's a solution for the residents, for us to not flood, and this isn't only during huge flooding events, this corner floods during a normal rain, that it is something that should be seriously considered. We also have hired, I'm not sure if this is, these are the engineers to my left, so I want to be careful, all respect for everybody, but there were engineers hired over a year ago to look into this issue, and again, we hear we are working on it, but what is being explored to provide some relief to this area? I would really appreciate if we could get some action, because for decades and decades and decades, it's been, we care, we're working on it, and nothing has happened. So that is what I'm here to express tonight, and I appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. West, and we appreciate you coming out and expressing your concerns. Seeing no other comments, I will move to the manager's report.
Thank you, President Kukler. As part of the downtown streetscape project, repairs will be made to the Fountain Plaza walls beginning July 18th through July 29th, weather permitting. The work will- The work will be conducted in two phases to minimize the area of disruption and impacts to pedestrian traffic. Please obey construction signage and use caution while walking in the area. For questions, please contact Public Works at 708-579-2328. In the fall of 2019, the village commenced a water and sewer rate study with our engineers Baxter and Woodman. In spring of 2022, the village asked Baxter and Woodman to expand on the study and include analysis of the new 2021 Illinois Lead Service Line Replacement and Notification Act legislation. So with your permission, Mr. President, I would like to turn things over to Public Works Director Rick Colby to begin the presentation.
Absolutely. Thanks, Rick, we appreciate it.
Thank you, one quick second, we'll get fired up.
I believe technology for the village hall is in one of our budget items, and as you can see, it may be necessary. There we go.
All right, great, slowly coming up. So thank you and good evening. I'm Public Works Director Rick Colby. I will take an opportunity to introduce the team, and they can introduce themselves as well. Oh yeah, if you don't mind. We're going to fill the center bay of lights to improve visibility on the presentation. So the village pursued this initially in 2019, and then we actually amended this study to address the recent pieces of legislation as they affect the Lead Service Act moving forward. So the initial part of the presentation will be given by Baxter and Woodman for the water and sewer rate, and then I'm going to come in and help to fill in some of the pieces associated with the Lead Service Act and how those fill in. Thank you.
Thank you so much for inviting us here tonight to talk about water and sewer rate study and capital improvement projects, as well as what President Kukler wisely said, a hot item with regards to lead, and we're going to be talking a little bit about that today, too. My name is Carolyn Greaves, I'm the project manager on the project from Baxter and Woodman here, and we have four essential items that we're going to go through in this presentation tonight. The first item that we're going to start talking about is the water and sewer capital planning element of the study that we started back in 2019. Based on that study, we put together a five-year recommendation for a water and sewer rate increase or some adjustments to rates, so we're going to talk a little bit about that process. We're then going to take a few minutes or as much time as we need to really dive into the lead line regulations, and as Rick mentioned, there is a new legislation in the state of Illinois that started at the beginning of this calendar year that really impacts how municipalities have to address lead. We're going to talk about what that means and how that impacts one of your projects that's coming up, so that's Brainerd Avenue Water Main, so a project that we'll have to talk about lead a little bit on that. We'll also be discussing how I E P A and a loan option could help us with lead. We're going to talk about that as we go here. So there's a lot of information that we're going to be sharing to give you some items for consideration and decisions that you can make here in the future and decide how you want to go forward. We will be sharing two different kind of rate structures that we took a look at for this, and we're really looking forward to getting your policy feedback for moving forward to finalize. I just want to add, we completely acknowledge that anytime we talk about sensitive subjects like lead rate increases, that's an extremely important element for a community for discussion, so we really made sure to make everything in this presentation as transparent and as clear as possible. But if we didn't achieve that for you, please let us know, so you can ask us questions, and we can dive in and dig into anything that you need, so you can make your decision. So I'm going to start here with the water system evaluation. The village's existing water system consists of about 59 miles of water main. Of that, about 40 miles is beyond the end of its useful life. So that sounds like a big deal, and I'm going to share a graph. Now, first off, engineers, we like graphs, but the reason I want to take a little second to go through this is I think it really exemplifies what is happening here in the village. And you can see on the bottom here, we go from the dates of when water, I don't know if we can, maybe, the dates of when Water Main was installed here in the village, and that's, I think, a little bit better, and I'll just read it for you, just in case it's hard to see. Over nearly 30% of the Water Main here in the village was installed in the 1920s decade. So you can see right now, we're at 100 years for over, almost 30% of the Water Main in the village. So that kind of starts steadying the stage as we were looking at the water infrastructure and what needs you might have. The other item that we took a look at is how many Water Main breaks you are seeing every year, and that's a really good indication of the health of your infrastructure. And you can see here over the years that we kind of bump around a little bit. We had some peaks in 2013, 2014, about 58 breaks per year, and it kind of levels back out, and this is pretty typical, Water Main breaks kind of ebb and flow. But what's important to note here is there is an association called the American Waterworks Association, so this is a good guide for us in the industry for what we should expect. So the A W W A, or American Waterworks Association, says you're never going to have zero breaks, but a typical healthy system should see about 25 breaks per 100 miles of main. At about 59 miles of Water Main, a community of your size should be seeing about 14 to 15 breaks a year. So you can see we're a little bit above that right now, you know, in the 30s, 30s per year. So it helps us see infrastructure starting to fail a little bit more than you should see typical system. Other graph that we like to take a look at again is seeing of these main breaks, where is it occurring? So using the village's G I S and history of data, we were able to take a look and see the biggest percentage of main breaks, over 40% is occurring on that 1920 main. So again, we're putting some of these pieces together that make common sense, but it helps us really understand that this aging infrastructure is starting to fail on the village, and it's something we need to start planning for, for the future. So a little extra information in here, average replacement cost is about $2 million per mile of Water Main. The other item I wanted to touch on was how we kind of came up with some of the recommendations. So as part of our infrastructure plan, we looked at a lot of the existing information, so there's a lot here on this, so I'm going to explain it to you if I can get to the, there we go. So right now, we're looking at a very small snapshot of the village's G I S, and all these stars are representing where Water Main breaks. You'll also be seeing some colors, so the color is indicating the age, and you'll see everything where there's some dash lines, shows us where the village has done street rating. We want to make sure as we're looking at infrastructure renewal and infrastructure replacement, we're making sure it makes sense to use good value for your money and do improvements where you need to do street improvements as well. So as we take a look at this, we actually ended up putting together a series of recommendations that the village can use and integrate with any planning processes for moving forward in terms of Water Main. The next item that the village has been doing a lot of work with over the years is sanitary sewer evaluations, and I understand since 2014, over half of your system has been televised. Now sewer's a little bit different, you're able to get into a sewer to see what the health of the system is. So that does give us a lot of really great information that the village has been actively using to do some repairs and improvements over the years. So we know the sanitary sewer, you've been doing a lot of that work since 2014, and we know over 7% of the system has been rehabilitated to date, so you've got some great first steps here. In addition, based on current analysis, we see some items that we're categorizing as immediate repair needs of nearly 800,000 that the village has gone ahead and budgeted for moving forward for this next fiscal year. And you can see for near term, in the one to five years, the village is looking at potentially up to $9 million. So again, sanitary sewer, village has been doing a great job tackling that, keeping on top of it, but the need continues to grow as infrastructure continues to age. So with that, getting that baseline of understanding what your infrastructure needs were, we started to look at what it would take to fund improvements. So I'm actually going to pass this along to Alexis, and she's going to go through the rate study element of the study.
So I'm Alexis Shotten, I have been working on the rate study for La Grange, been working really closely with Rick and with Lou to get these numbers put together for you. So the process of a rate study, we first look at what it costs to operate the water and sewer utilities now, and then project that into the next five years. And ultimately, the goal is to prepare a cash reserve that can fund operations, maintenance, emergencies, and capital improvement projects that are planned within the village's budget. So in order to do that, we look at the existing water and sewer rates, and then we provide different scenarios on what the rates should be in order to fund all of these items. We also want to note that the village of La Grange does purchase water from McCook, and in light of COVID, the village elected not to pass on any of those water rates, so part of this is trying to catch up a little bit with the rates that have been passed by So the village's current water and sewer rate structure is a volumetric-based structure in which each 100 cubic foot of water is charged at a specific rate. An example bill is also provided on this screen to show what a standard bill looks like. There are various rate structures that can be applied. Many communities have a variety of fixed fees, user group structures, but currently we decided to keep the existing rate structure for the village's customers. So this slide here shows a table of the McCook water rates, and you can see that in the past few years, McCook has increased their rates by about 8%, that was not passed on to the village's customers. And then for the projected years, we have about 2.5% increases, but this should be evaluated and changed year after year based on whatever McCook does pass. So the water and sewer systems have capital improvement projects planned over the five-year projection period, so you can see here we have the total for the water fund and then the total for the sewer fund. Currently, the big years in the water are fiscal year '24 and then fiscal year '27 due to large Water Main projects, and then on the sewer side, there are larger projects slated for fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27. In this proposed scenario, or in the two proposed scenarios that we're sharing tonight, we've also evaluated the addition of a $15 million water bond to help fund some of those future capital projects that Carolyn mentioned earlier that we had provided recommendations on, and we have set that debt service payments to begin in fiscal year '27. So that'll be really evident in this next graph here. Let's see if I can work this, perfect. So this red line here is the current cash balance in the water fund. I know you can't read the numbers, but the very endpoint in fiscal year '26, '27 is about negative $2 million, and that's due to the $3 million in water projects and that additional $1 million debt service payment. These two lines, the blue and the green, are the operating reserve goals. So the operating reserve goals are a percentage of the annual expenditures, less depreciation, capital, and debt service. So the blue line indicates a 25% operating reserve goal, which is how much cash should be maintained in that water budget in order to fund any emergencies that may arise. 25% was formerly recommended by the American Waterworks Association. They have moved past that as each community is a little bit different, so we've also added that 50% goal, and our ultimate goal here is to try to remain kind of in between those two. Some assumptions that were made for the projections is the $15 million debt service payment beginning in fiscal year '26, '27, which is part of the reason it declines in that final fiscal year. This does show the 2.5% increases from McCook in the future years, and then we've also kept the water purchased and water billed volume amounts consistent with the most recently available data, which was fiscal year 2021. So this graph here shows what happens if there are no water rate increases applied over the five-year period. This graph is essentially the same, except it's for the sewer fund specifically. So you can see here, when we were talking about that 25% operating reserve goal, that down here is only about 100, about 100,000 per year, which may not be enough to fund emergencies that arise. So that 25% is 200,000, the 50% is about, or sorry, the 25% is 100,000, the 50% is about 200,000. So ultimately, we would like to see a reserve even further above that 50% goal in order to fund any emergencies. This big dip in the red sewer balance is due to those larger capital projects at the end of the projection. So we've taken a look at two separate scenarios. The end result is very similar to each other, but we wanted to provide a scenario where there are flat increases applied for four years, and then the second scenario we look at will be a higher initial increase followed by smaller increases. So the first scenario is applying a 7% increase annually, beginning on May 1st of 2023. You can see on the graph what the percentage is. It shows the actual dollar amount per 100 cubic foot, and then the water rate, and then similar for the sewer rate, in addition to that sewer rate that was recently passed by the village. So with those 7% annual increases, you can see that we've obtained the goal of staying in between the 25 and 50% goals. It does dip down a little bit in fiscal year '23, '24, but it's able to recuperate, and then the end goal is right in between those goals. And then on the sewer side, we end up with approximately 900,000 in reserve in the sewer So this is a residential sample bill, so we've taken a look at what the average customer uses on a bimonthly basis, and the residential user generally uses about 1,500 cubic feet bimonthly. So here we show out the five-year difference. So the current water rate here is 142 for water bill, about 27 for sewer bill, and that brings the bimonthly total to 169. That is with the increase of that sewer that was passed recently. And then the following four years show that 7% increase, so the end result over five years would be a bimonthly bill of about $222 for the average residential user. And that's a cumulative annual increase of about $300 over that four-year projection. So the second scenario, as I mentioned, has similar results overall, but this is where we apply a 10% increase on May 1st, 2023, and then the following years, it's a 5% increase to both the water and sewer rates. This is the graph for the water fund, essentially the same graph as before, with the reserve ending up right in between that 25% and 50% goal, and then similarly for sewer, we reached that goal of about 900,000 in the reserve. And then this is the residential bill under this scenario, where the current bill is approximately $169 bimonthly, and then by the end of the projection in fiscal year '26, '27, it's about 215. It's actually a little bit lower than scenario one, it's a cumulative annual increase of about $270 over that four-year projection. So this next graph here shows a comparison with some neighboring communities or communities of similar sizes. It's a little bit hard to see on this graph, but La Grange current is shown here in a little bit darker at the 169. Right here is that scenario two with a 10% initial increase followed by 5% increase, and then here is that 7% annual increase. So currently, the village of La Grange sits right in the middle compared to some of its neighbors and moves up a little bit towards the higher end. However, we do like to note that this graph does not include any planned increases in any of the other communities. They may need to increase their rates as well to fund various projects, so that is important to note. Some of these communities may have other taxes and fees that are not publicly available on their website, and then each community does have various And then each community does have varying water and wastewater needs. So it's really difficult to get an apples-to-apples comparison for all of these communities. Another element that we looked at is the residential median affordability. So using the Northeast Illinois Water and Wastewater Rates Dashboard from the UNC School of Government Environmental Finance Center, we took a look at what these average bills are as a percentage of median household income. So the current bill for La Grange of 169 is approximately 0.84% of the median household income. And then under the two scenarios, under scenario two, which was the 10% initial increase, it bumps up to 1.07% of the median household income. And in scenario one, it goes to 1.10% of that median household income. So at the highest range of the scenarios, it is tied with the lowest of the other communities that we've looked at. Another element that we did not include as part of this rate study, due to some of the unknown surrounding it, is future sewer bonds. So the village is considering possibly taking out a sewer bond to fund sewer or stormwater projects beyond this five-year projection. So we wanted to show what that rate increase would be if that debt service needed to be funded as well. And that would result in about $1.80 per 100 cubic foot, additional to any increases that were applied in the previous scenarios. We do recommend that this be evaluated as there's more details on that sewer bond. It could really change the rate. So one that is decided upon, this should be reevaluated. So with that, I'm going to pass it to Rick to talk about some of the lead service line legislation.
Thank you, Alexis. All right, shifting gears a little bit, we were going to talk a bit about lead service. So there is new legislation that affects us as a community water service. And again, the Village of La Grange is a community water supplier, so this legislation has an impact on us. There are really two pieces of overarching legislation. There's some overlap in those pieces of legislation, so we're kind of highlighting the differences and their different areas of focus. On the federal side, it's really more of a sampling and how we basically do testing out in the field. So that affects our responsible water operators and the reporting we do for compliance to the IPA. And that's really what's highlighted as one of the differences in the federal lead and copper rule revisions. So that really affects us more, again, sampling at childcare facilities, additional sampling for lead that's above and beyond what we do today and with the compliance requirement by 2024. So not a significant cost impact and something we can do with, again, our normal practices in modifying those. But on the other side, and the one that has more impact on us today, is the Illinois Lead Service Line Replacement and Notification Act, which really impacts the distribution system and what the makeup of that distribution system contains and what materials it contains. So really, the law requires that all service lines must be replaced starting in 2027 at a rate of 6% per year. The tension with this is that the service lines per our village ordinance is actually a privately owned piece of infrastructure. So just context from the main all the way into the home per our ordinance that's privately owned. It's owned by the homeowner or the business, by whoever owns that parcel. That's a little different than some other municipalities where there's other demarcations that exist, typically a B box or a Buffalo box that we'll talk about here shortly. But just to kind of give an overarching understanding, that's the Illinois, the law requires changing infrastructure that's in the ground. That has cost implications. That's what we're kind of here, what we're talking about today. And then for those personnel, the legislation does require a community water service to submit a plan. And then it also requires us to report waivers for noncompliance for any partial services that are left or not replaced. So we'll talk a little bit greater about that. Some of the milestones associated with this law at a high level. The Illinois Lead Service Line Replacement and Notification Act is effective, started as January 1st of this year. It's in effect today. The main component that's in effect today is that there's no partial lead service replacement allowed. It's no longer allowed. So if we have a replacement of a water main, like so, for example, we're going to talk about the Brainerd project, or if there's an emergency break, which is on a service line, which isn't very common, but it does occur, those lines can no longer be partially repaired, which was a past practice. Past practice, you would cut out a section of lead, replace it with copper, basically do flushing and mitigation for the local issue and then move forward. The law no longer allows that. So we're going to have to manage that for emergencies as well as any water main replacements we do. So the next major milestone of the law is that an inventory must be submitted to IPA in 2024. The village has done a lot of work in this arena, starting in 2014. So in 2014, when we did a meter replacement program, we went through the entire inventory and noted the material that's associated with, that's incoming into the home. And the good news is 66% of that is found to be copper. That's the hard to get to part of this whole issue is that when we have to go into the home through a foundation wall or under a foundation into the residential side, if we can leave components of that alone, that's a significant cost savings to those who are involved. 66% of that is copper. But where we have more information, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that, is on the closer to the main side, closer to where it is in the street, where we have some of that aged main. It correlates that we have some lead on that side. So we have to have our inventory together by 2024. And then by 2027, we actually have to have a plan approved by the IPA on how the 6% annual replacement is going to be satisfied. And then by 2044, all lead should be out of the system or we'll have documented waiver for those parcels that had refused replacement, which then brings about something we're not going to expand significantly here, but kind of that records management piece and how we're going to maintain those records for in the future and how to maintain and manage that workload, which could be significant. We start talking about the 5,000-plus parcels we have here in town. So kind of a graphic here, just to give you a description and we'll do a little show and tell. The water main, and it's shown here, this is what's publicly owned. So publicly owned is the water main. This line is what we're talking about as a service line, and that runs all the way into the home. So typically, there's, and I'm going to go explain this, but we have this entire service that is all privately owned, that different components of it could be made of lead. So from here at the water service isolation, from here into the home could be copper. And from here out to the main, it could be lead. And now if we have a break in between these, this can no longer be left as lead. This component of that system needs to be replaced. Or alternatively, this could be copper in some scenario, or that could be lead. Or the entire thing could be lead, or there could be a section of lead with other sections of copper on either side. So in any of those scenarios, the entire system, the entire line is considered to be led for purposes of the inventory and for the plan. Just to kind of explain a little bit and use the props. I'm happy to show these a little bit again after the meeting. But to give you a sense of what we have to do when we go to do a lead service replacement. We have to excavate to depth. And then, so that's usually anywhere from five to eight feet to discover the water main. And we put a sleeve on, so that's this, this six-inch sleeve that then has a corporation stop, which is a brass fitting that has a valve. Then we use a boring tool to bore into that, to bore into the main. So literally by hand, we drill into that, to tap into that, to make the connection. And we have to remove that and connect a piece of copper from whatever the length is to where we have the roundway, which is what you often see, the roundway in what's called a B box, a Buffalo box, which is often what you see in your front yard. So that could be an open trench, that could be a directional bore. Depending if the water main's on your side of the street or the opposite side of the street, it could be a lengthy or very short run. And then it has to go from wherever this isolation point is, because this is where we remove and can do the operating from, again, five to eight feet above to key the valve. Then it goes into your home, where you have to have another isolation valve, and then into your meter that you commonly see. So a lot of what we see out there often is this is lead, and then we have a copper fitting and then a copper connection moving forward. We also have examples here of lead on both sides of, again, a corporation or a fitting. And then instances where we show here is a full copper. Also, just we have an old section of a 12-inch water main pipe from approximately 100 years ago with some buildup, which is pretty interesting to see. Point being, with all that information, is there's a lot that goes into replacing these components. And the components alone on that table are upwards of $3,000 to $5,000, depending on how long of a run you're discussing. The estimated number of water mains, or I'm sorry, lead service lines that are requiring replacement are 3,882 currently. Again, not all that is lead on all sides, but some component of that system is suspected to have lead. We're required to replace at least 228 lead services each year, starting in 2027, to get all the lead out of the system by 2044. And the total estimated cost over this 22-year period is $32.6 million for place all service connections. So we've been actually actively, again, since 2014, we've had an inventory. And we've been working towards, kind of even in advance of this law, of being compliant and best practice with this lead management. But we are developing a project plan, which is the first step in applying for a loan or a grant. So one of the advantages of these loans or grants is the possibility of principal forgiveness for lead service replacement projects. So the IPA has 108 million available for principal forgiveness, and a loan recipient may receive a maximum of $4 million per year. So that's the rule for 2023. That could change in future years, but that's the rules that exist today. So each $4 million loan would require a $7.28 bimonthly water bill increase until principal forgiveness is received, or until the loan term is completed. We are aware that these loans are going to be competitive. There's a lot of folks that are going to be competing for these as this legislation comes into effect. I think we're early, but it's still going to be very competitive and not something we can entirely bank on, but it is something that we're actively work on. So the first step is we do this planning document. This plan gets approved by the IPA. It covers us for five years. And every year, we apply against that and determine whether or not the loan makes sense. And I believe, as I understand it, the loan can actually be applied or accepted or not accepted conditionally upon some sort of forgiveness, whether that be complete, partial, or whatever the terms of that may be. The reason that's such a significant milestone in a future decision, but one we need to consider in the context of this discussion, is that per the legislation, the use of federal or state funds requires that the municipality pay for the complete service line replacement costs. So there's no cost share in that scenario. The idea being, if you're getting funds from somebody, you need to take care of the entirety of the issue for those that are receiving that benefit. What we want to discuss today, though, is the context of what we're doing for the Brainerd Avenue Water Main Project. So this project will occur before the IPA project plan can be approved. So it's something that we're funding with municipal funds. But we have, and it's before the law takes effect in 2027, although, again, no partial replacements are allowed. So we have to replace services as we come across them or document the noncompliance. So just for context of kind of where we're doing, we have 5,000 linear feet of 12-inch water main to replace. This is from 47th, the municipal boundary at Ogden. So a little over, or a little less than a mile of water main to replace. And really, there's two alternatives to consider. One being is to consider mirroring a similar approach we've taken on the Blackstone and Ashland projects, where some component of the cost was passed on to the residents. Or the alternative would be to fund lead replacements with water fund reserves, kind of take some of these costs and then build it into future rate discussions. We do have good data for Brainerd. And we've been developing, continuing to develop that as part of design. But there's approximately 131 residences that are served by this mile of water main. 67 of those are indicated to have lead on the homeowner's side, basically into the home. So of those 67, there's a component of that that we estimate that the cost for the private lead service line replacement or the component that's on the home side of the B box would be approximately $5,000 for an estimated total cost of $335,000 for that project. So this is something we hope to have some discussion on this evening. Because it does affect, this project is in design now. It would go out to bid sometime in late winter, early spring in order for a spring letting. And then we have a STP project, a street resurfacing project that follows this. In terms of just this project, in terms of the overall replacement of our inventory, this is a replacement of 2% of our overall water main inventory, which is a great thing to see happening. And it's some of our oldest water main where we used to have an old well water treatment. And so it's aged as well and needs it. So the action items associated with lead is to continue to pursue funding opportunities to get the lead out, to continue to refine material inventory ahead of our requirement to report that to the IPA in 2024. And then to discuss and kind of bawl us around policy considerations. So shown here is the existing ordinance for who owns that, which again, kind of states that the property owner is responsible for the water service from the building, including its connections to the village water main. And then again, we have a near-term policy consideration of how to address the Brainerd Avenue Water Main Replacement and any emergency service replacements if we were to come across. So as of today, we had emergency service replacement. The village would address the emergency component of it and then notify the homeowner of the requirement to replace their service line or document the noncompliance in the form of a waiver with reporting to IDPH. That's something we need to work through, how we want to handle that situation if there's any, once any changes to that policy or procedure. And in terms of conclusions and recommendations, we'll turn it back over.
All right, so for the recommendations for the water and sewer rate portion of this, either scenario does result in very similar results. So ultimately, it is up to the village to discuss and determine what would be easier for its residents. But we do want to make note that the village has kept the water and sewer rates flat for the past three years, and that increases are needed in order to recuperate some of that from McCook, as well as plan for future rate increases and capital projects. We do recommend looking at the rates, the water and sewer funds, every year to make sure the projections are on track and then perform a full rate study every five years. For the lead service line policy recommendations, we really just want to open it for discussion on the different policies that could be implemented. On the water main project side, so specifically for Brainerd Avenue in the short term and any future water main projects, the two options that we really see are the first option where the village funds the entire water service line from the water main to the meter inside the house. Or option two, which is what the village has been doing previously, where the village funds from the main to the B box during the water main projects, and then the customer pays from the B box to the meter. So that's one element that should be considered and discussed. The other is how to handle emergency repairs. So if there is an emergency repair that's needed on the water service line, as Rick said, there are no partial replacements or fixes allowed at this point. So currently, the residents are responsible for the cost of that full lead service line replacement under any emergencies. But the village could consider implementing a cost share program, and that would help encourage customers to replace their lead service lines as they need to.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation. We'd open it up for questions, comments, discussion.
Yeah, I'll let the trustees comment in a second. I did have a couple of questions, though. And one is, can residents go on our GIS system and see whether or not they have any lead in their line?
Yes, they can. We can share links to that portal. Feel free to call Public Works, but yes, they can currently see the status of lead. And right now, it's indicated as a single node for the property in terms of what material it's made of. We're continuing to, as we refine that inventory, add more detail and resolution for individual parcels.
So just to clarify that, if they have partial lead, does it show up as lead?
Right now, as if it's any lead, it shows up as lead.
Okay. And then if we could put on our webpage the link to that, I think that would be helpful for anybody watching tonight. I know that there was some talk about a possible bonding for sewer work that's different than this lead sewer line or lead service line. But maybe Lou, if you could just say, I know it was a $1.80 increase, but what does that mean? What are people currently paying? And would it be doubling the sewer rate?
Right. Based on the projections of a $15 million bond issue, this is something we discussed preliminarily back in October at the strategic planning session, where if the village were looking to do a bond for some type of sewer improvements, it would basically require a doubling of the sewer rate to about a dollar, an additional $1.80 per 100 cubic feet. That results in about an additional $200 annually to the residents that would be paying into the sewer fund. And that's what would be required to fund that, basically a million-dollar debt service payment each year for the next 20 years.
Okay, and the board hasn't decided that at all. But that is just to give us an idea of what, if we wanted to go out for $15 million in bonds and paid for it with a sewer rate increase, it would be approximately doubling the sewer rate. The question that the board needs to, well, first, let me say, on the water and sewer rate increases that were put up, again, we're not voting on those today. Those are going to be voted on each year when we do our budget. So that doesn't really need a whole lot of feedback today. But if anybody has any questions or comments, feel free. What our engineers are asking for us to consider to- What our engineers are asking for us to consider today is Brainerd Avenue. So, Brainerd Avenue, the street is going to be stripped down literally to the studs. This is the appropriate time to replace the water main and therefore, in the past, we would be doing that and then go to the homeowners and say, you have the option to fund with a discount because the contractor is going to give a good deal due to the amount of lines he's replacing. We can do it at this time. Homeowner, it's going to cost this amount and the homeowner had the choice on whether to do that or not. Because of the new law, if a homeowner says, no, I'm unwilling to do that, they now have to sign a waiver that's going to be filed. Do we know who's, where it's going to be filed?
Yes, sir. The Illinois Department of Public Health.
With the Illinois Department of Public Health indicating that they refused to take out their lead service line and they understand what that means for the health. It's assumed that when people now, as it goes forward, start selling their homes and things like that, purchasers are going to be asking about this waiver issue. So, so it's going to be an issue to our residents now, much more so than it was even before. Do we know what percentage was electing back when Park and Blackstone and Sunset had it redone and they were offered to pay?
No, just to expand on that, with the previous project with Ashland and Blackstone and why this there is, it was so advantageous to do it. We estimate the cost of the service line replacement to be $12,000. So, the component that, from again, into the home, the cost share was approximately $5,000 for that. So, a really good deal for those personnel who are people who are able to participate at that time. It was, it was the majority. So, it was in the 70 to 80% range in terms of personnel and people who were, who opted in at that time.
And if we were to use those numbers, again, just so the board hears it, for Brainerd Avenue, what I think Rick is saying is that the, if we said, homeowners, you are responsible for the cost, at least the cost from the B box or Buffalo box into the house, it would cost them approximately $5,000. However, if they elected not to do it and then at a subsequent time decided, now I want to do it, it would cost them $12,000 to do it.
That is correct.
So, what we need to decide today, I guess, and I don't know that we vote on this, but we need to give some indication, and Ben, correct me if we need to vote or something, but we need to give an indication as to what staff should be communicating to the homes on Brainerd. And it really is that we're going to continue to what we've been doing in the years past, which is fund up to the Buffalo box, but the homeowners would be responsible for that 5,000 approximate cost from the Buffalo box through their homes. Or does the village want to say, no, we'll pay the whole thing, but that would be just for Brainerd Avenue, $330,000 approximately and setting a precedent going forward that we would be paying for everyone's. And right now, we don't have a funding source to do that. So, at this time, I would open it to any questions that the trustees have. Trustee Gail.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think on, are we gonna, we're gonna have a long discussion, right? We're not just gonna discuss the Brainerd, we're gonna discuss other stuff, too, because I got a whole bunch of questions.
Well, you definitely can discuss other things by all means, but I think because Brainerd is being torn up soon, we really need to get a direction on Brainerd.
So, both. I'll start with Brainerd and then we'll talk about Brainerd and then come back to me.
Well, however you want to do it.
Yeah, let's come back to me after, after Brainerd. So, I think, I think with Brainerd, I think, I think we want to maintain the policy we've done, where we're gonna pay up to the B box, from the B box to the house, we give the discounted rate, because I think that's fair then to folks that have been doing that in the past. I think if we, if we now say we're gonna pay for the whole thing, we're gonna have that precedent and we're gonna have residents saying, well, wait, I just, you know, I just paid for mine two years ago and now, you know, if I had just waited, you know, we'd get it paid for. But I am wondering, but I do think what, one of the things we should do is communicate to residents the clear cost implications of not. But if they don't do it, right, that, that subsequent purchaser, I think, I think you're right, any subsequent purchase of a home, the due diligence of the purchaser, they're gonna go, well, wait, you have a lead service line. Well, you're gonna have to pay to have that replaced and that cost is gonna be much more than if they just do it now and sort of bite the bullet. I think that seems like, at least that's my initial thought of what would be the approach we should take.
Thank you, Trustee Gail. I can understand that. I agree with it. Any other trustees' comments? Trustee Peterson. And Trustee Peterson moved so that she could see the screen.
Yeah, I'm over here. Now, I'm hearing an estimate of $5,000 and I'm gonna be, I know these questions are gonna sound kind of elementary, but how comfortable are you with that assessment? Because I've been hearing that now for about a year. So, $5,000, is that pretty accurate or is that estimate somewhere in the neighborhood of 18 to two years old already?
No, I believe that's accurate for the components we're discussing on the, on that side of that. So, there is still variance in, kind of with these costs over time. We do know as, this is a national laws as well as state laws, so we do anticipate in the future, there's gonna be a lot of cost escalation, but as of today, that's a, that's a pretty good number. Obviously, we want to refine that, but it's a pretty good number in terms of the shared cost. It's only talking about from that, that one top into the home with the other cost being, included in the scope of the village's project.
So, these replacement service lines, even if we did them, even if the, we continued our policy where the homeowners were invested or they paid for, what is the B box going into their house? Is that my understanding? Is that correct? Yes.
For Brainerd, yes.
For Brainerd. Oh, this is, this is really, are there any that you see supply chain slowdowns or problems that you see at this point?
Yeah, we're monitoring that very closely.
You are, yeah.
When you bring it up, for, for water main, for ductile iron, for PVC piping, there was, and as well as copper fittings. It's something that we're monitoring very closely and we're actually including that in the entire design process, how to get those, those long lead items identified, how to get them purchased early and so there's time to get that material. So, it, it does exist and it kind of comes in fits and spurts where it exists and then it gets cleared up and then sometimes there's another shortage. So, we are looking at long lead items specifically for the Brainerd Avenue Water Main Project.
So, it's on your radar?
Very much on.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just guess I'll go on the record and I concur with Trustee Gail on the approach of having the residents have full responsibility for their replacement costs. One question to Rick, though. So, my neighborhood, which is, I guess, the southwest side of La Grange, had its streets resurfaced two years ago, so I'm just trying to get a, a general observation question. The service, they just resurfaced the road, the piping, the sewers were not redone at that point. So, does that mean within the next cycle to 2044, if and when that road gets redone again, that would be the next time that section of the village would revisit that replacement line or can they do this separately or how does that work?
Yeah, so, all of the above. No, we can do it separately. It does involve, and we do try to manage that against pavement condition, because a lot of times you can excavate in a small trench, dig down to the water main, and it depends on where the water main is, on the blocks, too, and certain blocks, it's in border of the street, in border of the curb line. So, in that case, you don't have to excavate the street to do the lead service replacement at that time. But the, you can excavate to depth and then directionally bore under or across, under curbs. It's kind of a method and approach you have if you're trying to save the pavement. If you think that pavement's coming up to be replaced in near, sometime in the near term, then we could actually do that out in the street or you could still do it in the street with patching and patch the individual locations. But in terms of the overarching kind of street condition assessment, that, that is driven by the condition and we do try to find those, kind of going back to the beginning of the water and sewer rate, the past practice of looking at infrastructure improvements, literally water main and sewer replacement with street condition, we've looked at those as kind of a Venn diagram where those overlap as those targets for investment, where we get the greatest return on investment currently.
Yeah, thanks for that commentary, Rick. I guess I would totally agree that that's the opportunity to address each, each of the households. When you're actually tearing up the street and replacing the sewers, you know, like these one-off projects on streets that have just recently been done, to me, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but it seems very expensive.
Yep. And those, we would look at that as, we'd look at water main age, criticality of what it's being serviced, the whole, kind of a whole criteria we'll have to develop in figuring out what is the, we're doing the 6% starting in 2027, that, what percentage is first, second, third. And then we'll also look at strategies associated with water main, water main replacement lining, if we want to include some of those improvement opportunities at the same.
All right. Lot of, lot of money. Just leave it at that.
Yes, it is. Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Kukler. Yeah, it seems clear to me that there's not a good argument to do any other than what we've been doing, which is shares, you know, while we're in there, we give the residents a really great deal on doing what I think everybody wants done to their lines anyway. I mean, I think, and I think you said it earlier, there's a pretty high rate of residents when offered this option before it was mandated. Who took us up on that? They were happy to get the lead out of their line. So, we're likely to see that same percentage much higher. I can't imagine, although I'm sure there will be people who refuse. So, yeah, I would think it would make sense to keep it the way we have it with sharing with the costs incurred by the homeowner as we've done it, certainly on Brainerd and then, you know, kind of what we've all been talking about, when we redo our streets, when they need the water main and the street surface redone, we try to plan for those to happen at the same time. We try to take, redo a street that has an old water main and crumbling street surface, do those at the same time for economies of scale. But we have 20 years to do this and we're gonna try to do probably the worst ones first, right? Block by block, street by street. It'll be similar to what we've been doing, but there will probably come a point where we're not, you know, we're not redoing the main itself and/or the street surface at all. So, we're really just digging holes home by home, right?
Possibly. Yes, our next large-scale water main improvement is in '26, '27 with associates, $3 million for water main, $3 million for streets. So, that's within the realm of our, without any other, that's the pay-as-you-go model. It's within our current capital budget is, exists today. So, that's our next big plug. Then we'll look at funding opportunities possibly with I E P A loans and see how successful those are as other possible, four million dollars, but that four million may or may not include, depending on how we want to structure it, water main replacement, because if we're really targeting, you said, lead service replacement is the focus, we may be doing individual repair, service line replacement repair type of activity, not necessarily the full other things, just because of the cost would become much, much.
Right. So, for some folks, they won't know whether they're gonna get the $5,000 deal or be paying 12. That'll, that'll come with time or whatever the cost will be, because material costs can change and labor. So, hopefully, we'll keep the prices down as low as we can, but at some point, we all need to start saving a few extra nickels away for that, but hopefully, everybody will start to go online and see where they are and if you know you have lead or partial lead, then, you know, time to start saving for that, I guess.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine. Clerk Saladino whispered in my ear that he and some of his neighbors contracted to have their service lines replaced individually when, when the street was ripped up and that they were able to get a lower price. So, again, the residents, you know, in Blackstone and Aziz, are developing, will obviously look and see what alternatives are most favorable in their situation. They, by all means, any homeowner can contract individually and we'll be working with them on doing so. I know, Trustee Gail, you had some other comments, so why don't we bounce back to you? I'm getting a, the direction that the board is comfortable keeping it the way we, we were. And if everybody can just kind of nod, I'll, I'll know that I didn't misinterpret that. So, that's great direction for the staff and we appreciate that. And then, Trustee Gail.
Thanks, Mr. President. I wanted to turn to sort of paying for all of this. The first thing is still with the sewer, with the service lines. You mentioned the I E P A loan, Rick. Is that an interest-free loan or how does that, how does that work?
A low-interest loan, one point.
1.24%, I believe.
Okay.
Percent interest.
Got it.
And that may be forgiven.
It may be forgiven, right? Right, under like, and do, you kind of touched on it, I mean, are there, do you know the criteria? Is it certain? Yeah, what, what, what does it take to get it forgiven? Because, you know, when I hear loan, I think, well, that's great, we gotta pay it back. It's like a bond, so, you know, it still comes out of our pocket.
Yeah, Carolyn will talk about some of that. I do want to clarify that it's currently 1.24% for this year, but it does change each year as well.
Oh, sure.
I'll dive into that just a little bit for you. So, the I E P A low-interest loan program to start is the best mechanism for lead service line replacement money right now in the state of Illinois that we know. Infrastructure bill money, they dedicated $15 billion nationally for lead service replacement. We don't know what percentage of that is coming to Illinois, but that will be routed through that low-interest loan program. So, we know there's gonna be more money coming towards the loan program for lead service replacement projects. So, like Rick mentioned, you are really kind of, you know, at the front of the pack, getting ready for this money, putting in this project plan that Rick talked about as the first step to getting, to getting potential for this money. Right now, they're saying there's the potential for 100% forgiveness, which is huge for up to that $4 million. That's a really big deal. There is also, they are saying the potential for when they get kind of through that first round of 100% forgiveness, they'll be at another level where it'll be 49% principal forgiveness. So, again, another nice, something to look forward to, but right now, I E P A will be the first to say they're not sure how they're going to distribute all of this, because they know the need is huge. So, what we're saying is, is the more ready you can be, the better you are in terms of the ability to get this money. So, they want to make sure you are, have your plan, know your locations, know why you've picked those locations, critical facilities, are you tackling those? Get all of that information in place, which is what you are working on right now, and that's gonna put you further along on the pack in terms of, of doing this. The next phase is if you are more shovel-ready, so if you start putting your design plans together on this, that's gonna move you up even further on the, the loan priority list. So, what I would suggest is everything you're doing right now, you're on the right track and keep doing that to make sure you're, you're in the front of the line to hopefully get some of that principal forgiveness in the next couple of years.
Okay, thanks. That's good to know. And so, sticking on money, I'm glad you guys are all there, Lou, you need to start paying attention to. So, all right, so we got I E P A loans to pay for water mains, right? We can't use that money for anything else.
Lead service line.
Lead service lines, sorry, lead service lines.
You can use I E P A state revolving loan program money that we're talking about for water system improvements and sanitary system improvements. You can use that money for infrastructure improvements.
Does that include storm sewers?
It does. It includes storm sewers if it's a water quality concern.
All right, we'll unpack that at some other.
Exactly. That's another meeting.
Because, because I hope you see where I'm going, right?
I do.
Because we got lead service line.
Yes.
We got water mains.
Yes.
We got storm sewer.
Yes.
We got sanitary sewer. We got streets, right? And so, we're gonna rip up a street to put in a service line, to put in a water main and then maybe do service lines, too. And it sounds like we got different revenue streams for those different things. So, specifically sewer bonds, right? We were talking about a $15 million sewer bond. What can we use that for, Lou?
When, when you would propose the sewer bonds, you would have it project-specific, like the bonds we did back in 2015 were for sewer improvements. So, at the time the bonds were issued, it would have, you would have a better description of what the project to be included was, but 2015, we left it a little bit generic so that it wasn't specific towards the 50th Street Storm Sewer. It could be used for other sewer improvements as well, but that would be at the time the bonds were issued, that you'd have that description of what the, the project was.
Could we, could we write it really broad to include, say, streets, storm sewer and sanitary sewer?
Since it's being funded by the sewer rate, it would have to be specific to sewer components. One of the other things that we talked about back in October was also, because we're talking about doing the streets and the water mains at the same time, we're not only talking about having a water bond in 2027, but also a street bond that would fund the street component of those combined projects. component of those combined projects. That's something we talked about possibly either doing through a property tax referendum or looking at other potential revenue sources that might be able to fund those debt service payments. So it's doing both of those projects in conjunction, I think, like we talked about just a little bit ago, is, once we rip the street up to do the resurfacing, that's the time to put the Water Main in, so that you have that economies of scale of doing just both projects at the same time.
Right. So a storm, so a street bond and a sewer bond.
Well, street and water for specifically what we're talking about now, and then potentially sewer bonds as well, depending on what happens with the current projects and funding based on the court hearing proceedings that we're going to be having in a couple of months.
All right, so we can do the street and the water bond. That can be the same bond?
They would be different funding sources, but they would be issued at the same time to fund those projects, which would be concurrent to each other.
Okay. All right. I'll talk to you more about it, because it sounds like two different sets of bonds.
Well, definitely two different, and it's because there are two different funding sources for the specific projects. Again, one's more than likely through a property tax referendum, the other one directly through the water rate, which is what we talked about this evening.
I think.
I'll take that pause. Thank you, Trustee Gail. Any other comments, suggestions, questions? Seeing none, did we give you the direction that you needed for your next steps?
Yes, sir, you did.
All right, terrific. Thank you very much. Anything left on the manager's report?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you. Great report. Thank you to our engineers. Thank you, Rick, for your work, Andre, for your work. We do appreciate it. I know that we've already allowed this, but I'll just, in case there was anybody in the audience that had any comments, feel free to come up at this time. But Ron, if you're coming. I don't see anybody coming, so I'll move. We are going to go into closed session, which I'll read in a second, but I would ask if any trustees have any comments, because we will not be coming back here tonight. Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion in a second to go into closed session under Section 2C1 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act to discuss matters related to the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and under Section 2C21 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Illinois Open Meetings Act.
A motion we go into closed?
Thank you, Trustee Augustine.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Gail. Is that a?
Roll call.
Clerk Saladino, will you please conduct the roll?
Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
Trustee Gail?
Aye.
Trustee Koteenik?
Aye.
Trustee McGee?
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Again, we will be going into closed session, and we will be then ending the meeting at that time. We don't have meetings for the next two, so everybody enjoy the rest of the summer. We'll see you back here on August 28th, I believe it is, and hopefully, we'll see at all the events in La Grange. Thanks.